Myron and Myron is here. I didn't see Sheila come in though.
Hi, Myron. Okay, we are ready to go. Okay.
There he is.
We're all set.
Okay, we are calling to order the meeting of going down to school district, please join. Begin the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. For those of you in the chair. We'll start out with a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of September 23rd, 2024. Make a motion to seven or eight minutes. Okay, Mike makes a motion. Is there a second? What? Somebody seconded it?
Kevin did?
Okay. Any corrections? To those minutes? No? Okay, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2024, say aye. No, that's standing because I wasn't here. I don't know whether they're correct or not. What the heck? Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Yes, ma'am?
I would like to see if you could table transportation services as Bruce Kennedy is unable to come tonight as well as today.
Hey? I didn't see him. Oh, there.
Under Spotlight on Success.
Okay, so with the idea of cutting out Spotlight on Success tonight, does the motion still stand? Okay, we're cutting it out. Nobody objecting? Good thing, because I guess it wouldn't do any good. All right. All those in favor of adopting tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. All right, none are opposed. It's adopted. Public comments? Probably nothing on YouTube. Any public out there that want to comment? Any not public? Any private? Okay. We have no public comments or questions. We'll skip right to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Thanks. Second?
I'll second.
All right. Any questions about it? Looks all pretty standard. Standard stuff. You have any comments, Diana?
I was just gonna say we don't typically have bills on the first meeting, usually in the second, but we had to wire money over. We got a new trash truck, $2,007, 3,500 Chevy. Is it Chevy? With a dummy lift?
Yeah.
For, I don't know, $5,500 plus taxes.
Sounds like a good deal.
It is a good deal. To replace the.
Garbage truck?
No, it's just a regular 3,500 Chevy with dump locks on it with the lift gate.
Tommy lift, yeah.
That's not good. It would be used for garbage. The red one is.
But it will replace the red one. You know the red truck?
Yeah.
What year is the red truck? It's 70?
No, I think that one's 85.
I was gonna say, I feel like that's been around since.
I don't know if you've seen it, but it's pretty good.
I see it driving around.
Yeah, we got a great deal.
And the first thing going in the new trash truck is the red truck?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions about the consent agenda? If not, all those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And. Anybody want to say no? Brain fart, sorry. No? Okay. Then the ayes have it. It's consented to. Reports moving right along here. Leadership report, district assessment results. This is for discussion by the board and the superintendent.
Yeah, and so I have our building principals here, Myron here, and each year in late August, early September, OSPI finalizes a portion of what our report card is called, and it's published on OSPI, and we're required to post it somewhere on our website. And so we're gonna review our Smarter Balance Assessment performance data in both the third, I mean, in all grade levels where it's taken, as well as the WA-CAS, which is the Washington Comprehensive Assessment. Of science, yes. So we're gonna start with.
So this is all last year then?
This is 2023, 2024. We'll start with Sarah Becker from Forks Elementary School.
I can't either. So I think it talks about our SBA scores in my Spotlight on Success.
Can they make those any bigger so you can see? I can't do it on my, one on my screen.
You can't do it on your screen either?
No, I tried looking at them last night. I couldn't make it out.
So I can read it out loud for you in my. Because I'm looking at it on the screen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So our scores are pretty low in both areas. Our third grade, third grade was 18.6% proficient in ELA. Our fourth grade came in at 47.6%. And then our third graders, their math was 32.2%, and then our fourth graders came in at 38.1%. We, as I shared in my, thank you, in my Spotlight on Success, our smarty goals are tied directly to our SBA data and I-Ready data. So we are very aware of where we're at and are hoping to make at least 20% gains in proficiency with the idea that we can't move all of them until we can move some of them.
Okay, well, this is a comment for all of the scores. They were abysmal. And I was curious, two things. How do they tie to the, like, this whole I-Ready process that we, you know, we're checking I-Ready pretty frequently, and it strikes me that I-Ready tends to be higher scores than this? Like, we have more, we have more that are deemed proficient at the I-Ready level than they do at this, on this assessment? Am I wrong in that?
I think one of the big differences in the two assessments is I-Ready does a lot of clicking the right answers, whereas Smarter Balance has performance-based tasks, meaning that they need to solve problems, math problems, for example, and explain their thinking or rationale. And so there's that, like, a higher level of rigor and thinking that's assessed. Same thing with the I-Ready reading. It only assesses reading. And again, it assesses that click, clicking the button, right response, where the Smarter Balance Assessment, students are required sometimes to ask, sometimes they are given three right answers and they have to choose three out of five and explain why those three are the best answers, not necessarily.
Is the, is the, whatever.
And then.
Go ahead.
And then it doesn't include the writing component. And so I-Ready does not measure writing, and a huge component in the Smarter Balance is the writing and the listening.
So in the math section of the SBA?
Smarter Balance Assessment.
Yeah, SBA. Do you still have to write a paragraph about how you solve a problem?
Yeah, but they don't, they don't rate or score the conventions of that response. They only score the.
The explanation.
Of the response.
Wait a minute. They only, they only score what?
The explanation of whether or not it makes sense rationally and critically thinking as opposed to the conventions, like, do they start with a capital and end with a period? Do they have the right subject, verb, matter, and all of that? So it's not so much the conventions of writing. It's about explaining how you got to your answer. And just one little caveat. If you look at the fourth grade math scores, that's where our state-level math scores are. So the fourth grade class, for whatever reason, are very close to what the state-level scoring is. I would prefer that our students scored higher than what the state level is. But they are in a proportionate to what all other fourth graders competed. I think at the fourth grade level for math, it's 47.8, and at the fourth grade level for reading, ELA, it's 40, reading and writing, it's 48.5, and they're at 37. If you look at where our third graders are, think back three years ago when they were in COVID. Not that that is an indicator, but they were either in kindergarten, I think they would have been in kindergarten, first grade, when you're getting ready to read, and you can see some serious deficits there.
So why do we continue to, with I-Ready when it doesn't match up with SBA, which seems to be the better indicator of what these kids know and understand? Anybody?
We have a, we are required to do interim assessment of some sort, especially for all of our additional funding that we get, like through Learning Assistance Program, where we are measuring progress. And we used to do math. There's all different, and in fact, Insight School of Washington, our online program uses a different tool than we do, but we have to figure out some tool. And we spent several years trying to figure out what that was. The I-Ready piece, we just also bought I-Ready magnet, reading and writing tools for the elementary curriculum, and there's a lot more than just the assessment component. It does correlate to some of the standards. It does measure student progress, but it's not perfect. And I don't think that any of the tools that they have out there are perfect. But you guys out in the audience who knows firsthand what we're using can agree or disagree.
And so what are the ramifications of the SBA rankings or scores? I mean, it's fine that we're equal to the state, but we should be at 100%, which I know is unreachable probably, but we should try. I don't know. It just seems. And the other, the other issue I have is, this is hard to judge a little bit because I don't know what the SBA, I don't recall what the SBA was from last fall for the year before or the year before that. So I don't know which way our trends are going. I understand there was COVID in there.
Yeah, and the third grade is the first time that they take the SBA too, so you're not gonna see previous scores. We could certainly show a cohort.
Well, that would be the third to the fourth grade.
That would be the third to the fourth grade to see whether or not they made gains. And we could bring that back to you so you can see better. We're gonna talk a little bit later about your training with our solution tree, where you get a two-hour training so you know what we're doing. But part of what we know is missing is that really honing in on the learning targets that will prepare students for the test and then showing how important it is that students take the test and give it their best once we have aligned our practices in the classroom for a guaranteed and viable curriculum. You're gonna hear me say that over and over again.
To me, it seems odd that the whole state is at that 47% or whatever it is. And it makes me think the state's doing something wrong.
I mean, the whole country.
How can you have the whole country so screwed up?
Well, there is a general theme across the nation that the students are behind. There are other grade levels where there's a lot of discrepancy between even us and the state, where we're much lower than the state.
They should do something different. I mean, this isn't working. It doesn't look to me like. I mean, we've been talking about this for 10 years. I don't know. It just seems like we're just keep kicking the can down the road. I know there's no answer for that, but it just seems a little weird. Well, interestingly enough, when I was reading through some of this, I don't remember if it was in tonight's agenda. I think it was in a meeting that I missed. I was reading some of the notes in the minutes, and I think it was maybe in the elementary school Spotlight on Success, so last meeting, I guess. And I saw where there was starting to be, it seemed to be more of an emphasis even now than there has been in the last couple of years on use of phonetics, for instance, to, I guess, learn the English language and learn to read and all. And I remember wondering why we weren't teaching phonetics 20 years ago when we started going away to these different English language art research, research-based concepts. And yet now I see that we're starting to come back to the real basics of phonetics, which is what you learn and I learn, and, you know, anybody. Probably you guys learned it too before, you know, you got into all this research-based stuff. And I have become kind of skeptical of research-based programs. And so, and I know I missed a lot of discussions about the PLC program, so I definitely need to go to some of that training so I can ask some questions and hear what's going on. But I don't know. I just get, you know, after 30 years on the board, it seems like we have bounced all over the map on getting these scores up, and we're not making any progress. And that's not, I know there are lots of factors, so I'm not pointing the finger or anything. I'm just frustrated, I guess, that these scores are so low.
Transportation table, provision tables, and do they go through and memorize them?
But you still have, if you remember, if it's like in English, in English, we have memory. Is this off the subject? Is this out of line right now?
No, this is your meeting.
Okay. Well, okay. So like in English, in English, there are certain words that are memory words, I believe. You just, you just gotta memorize them. Well, in math, for instance, a times table should be a memory thing. Do you have to write a paragraph on two by two times 10? Or, I mean, see, maybe I'm out of touch here with, with what it is. Or if you're in algebra, you have to, do they have to write on algebra tests in high school how they got through English? Pardon me?
We're trying to get that implemented, get that up there to explain the reasoning.
But see, so much of that is just memory, is memory work, you know, how to do that.
Students are learning algebra concepts as early as first, second, and third grade, and so.
See, to me, that's weird. Why?
No, it's like sorting colors, sorting different dinosaurs. I mean, it's really foundational.
They're calling it algebra, but it wasn't called that.
And part of what our new work that takes three years to implement is that teachers really look at the standards at their grade level of what they're required to teach, and they figure out how they're gonna expose students by units, and they determine which of those learning targets are most important to master the test. So it's really focused. It would be like taking a driver's test, and a good portion of it is learning how to parallel park. If parallel park is being taught and you never practice it, you can't perform it on a test.
And you don't want to practice it because you've got to write an essay on how you parallel park, rather than just practicing it and doing it. You know, it just, I don't know. I guess, I've heard this, I've heard this before. And, you know, over the years, we have bounced to a lot of different programs, and we're still chasing that holy grail of 50%, if you would, you know, just to pick the number out of a hat. So it's very frustrating for me to see these kinds of scores, and I don't know what to do with it because I don't know what to do about it, because I'm not a teacher, I guess. I'm not an administrator. But, you know, we're coming to the end of COVID, and a lot of those, I've heard people saying that the effects of COVID are passing, but that may just be behaviorally. I'm not sure. But academically, I don't know. I think it's abysmal, but you can quote me. All right.
I know we gotta follow the state guidelines though. We gotta do what they jump through their hoops.
As does every state, yeah. The state figures out what kind of testing. They don't have to follow Smarter Balance, but if they don't do Smarter Balance Assessment, then they have to figure out their own testing that meets the federal requirements. And I don't know how many states there are that do that, but this is what Washington State requires. Most states require the Smarter Balance.
Well, it sure seems to be working.
It's not working, yeah.
All right, well, let's continue then.
Bill and Diana, just really quickly, I know it's kind of unusual for me to step in here. I just got a phone call from my son. He was involved in a minor collision. I need to head out to help him. Could we skip to Insight Washington super fast and then allow me to step out?
Yes, we'll go down to the Insight School of Washington, and then we'll pop back up to the middle in the high school.
I apologize for that. It was not anticipated, obviously, so.
Well, I'm glad it was minor, but absolutely. Go for it.
Myron, can I preface this with the state requirements are that we have 90% attendance participation details, and that's why I put Insight School of Washington with participation details? Because they have a pretty big challenge with our testing sites. How many do we have? 36?
Yeah, we have quite a few testing sites. It's actually 95% as a participation rate. And what happens is if students don't participate in the state assessment, they go in as if they failed the assessment when they do these calculations. And so these calculations automatically include a zero for anybody who did not test. And to help address that, Diana, kind of, the other thing is that one of the things that we're trying to really focus on is allowing for remote testing, and the state of Washington to allow us to proctor these exams remotely in order to help with that participation rate, because one of the big challenges we have is getting the families to appear at state testing, getting them there, because we can't necessarily always get them as close to their home as they would like. And then when their students are going here, they're in testing in an environment that is totally different than what they normally go to school in, which throws them off, right? Because they're not in the same space. They're not in the same place. So they got the transportation there, being introduced to an environment they're not normally in, and so that also has an impact. There are some states that already allow for remote testing, even within our, like, for example, Oregon does it. I believe California is also allowing for remote testing right now. And so we're working right now on making that happen as well. When, I don't know if you guys have put up the slides yet for Insight Washington. I can just speak to it in generalities, if you will. One of the things, yeah, go ahead.
Hang on one second, and we'll get there.
So if we move down to Insight Washington. So the participation rate's comparable to what it was in prior years. We're still working on trying to improve that going forward. And as I indicated before, that has a definite negative consequence to the final scores that are posted by the state on the score report card. And then when we look at the actual scores, one of the things that, this guy shows the participation details, and you can see the percent of those scores in that prior slide. If you look at these scores here, one of the things that I have noted is when I look, when I take out the kids that not, didn't participate on the ELA, our actual, if you look at the kids we actually assessed versus the ones that are being reported there, are, they're still not fantastic, but we do see anywhere between a four to 11-point increase on the numbers for ELA than what you're seeing on this particular slide, depending on the grade level. And math, it's not as dramatic. Math actually had a lower participation than ELA. But we are seeing anywhere between a 1 to 4% increase once, if you only include the kiddos that are not assessed in, if you remove the students that didn't participate in the assessment. Very similar to what you are doing at your other schools. We use a product called Star 360, which is adaptive assessment, and very similar to what was shared with Forks Elementary. These adaptive assessments, like Star 360 and I-Ready, they only are giving you multiple choice experiences, where the Smarter Balance Assessment does require a performance task. That's a big portion of this, of the assessment. And so that's another piece to that. And so one of the things that we really try to do in Insight Washington is we try to provide targeted, we got, using the Star 360, we identify kids for additional supports in ELA and math. And we also try to make sure that our teachers are providing performance task-like items that the students do, and they're not just doing like quizzes. They're doing tasks similar to what they would see on the SBA. So when they see those tasks, they're not thrown off, and they're like going, what is this? What's it about? How is this different from what we're doing before?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Myron.
Anything else?
No, you're excused now.
Thank you.
Bye, Myron. Bye, Myron.
All right.
We'll go to Forks Middle School?
Please. If you dare.
You have to get close to.
You want to use my? Here, you can, yeah, you can use ours.
Versus bigger.
So as you notice, our ELA scores kind of range between the 28% and 32% meeting standard. And I believe this is still using the, so the state is now starting to look at two measures. One is the students that are on track for college learning, level learning, and so that's what these numbers are. And then the other number that they're looking at is that foundational level. And so, again, we want all students to be college and career-ready. But if you look at that number that ranges from 26 to 32 in ELA, the foundational students at the middle school is about 61% are meeting that new standard that the state is looking at. Still, we still want all students to be college and career-ready, but that's kind of the two measures that they're starting to look at. In the math, our scores range from 16% to about 25%. And so, again, looking at the foundational level, we have met 47% of our students are at the foundational stage.
And foundational, she means you can score a four, a three, a two, or a one, and the state is starting to look at those students who master at a two and above, and they call that foundational.
Foundational.
Meaning that they know the basics.
That they know the basics.
The basics, and that they, that they, if they were to go on to college, they may need some remedial, but they would still be successful.
That's not these numbers.
That's not those numbers.
No.
And then the science, at fifth grade, we are at 50%, and at eighth grade, we are at 28%.
And the fifth grade scores are very similar to what the state level is. I think they're at like 55, 54%. And so, again, we would want to look at our fifth grade. We have one teacher who does fifth grade science and look and see what it is, what her success rate, because those are the same kids everywhere else, to find out what the success is there.
What's she doing that makes it more interesting, more interesting than the other ones?
Yeah, and so last year's fifth graders, which are now sixth graders, also scored way up above the state average. And the ones that are seventh graders now scored kind of about the same as this year, this last year's student. So next year, as eighth graders, we are hoping that they are about the same or above, given that they've had three other years of science instruction.
Well, next year, when you come with this, can you put?
Yeah, we can put.
Can you start to put so we can see how the fifth graders?
Apples to apples. Yeah, and I do, we do do that for our staff. Our staff does look at that progression of progress. And we do see, what we're noticing is we are not seeing dips. We are seeing either they're maintaining or they're growing. At the level, we want them to grow, but we are seeing some growth. And of course, the test gets harder as they get older, and so maintaining that is a huge task for our students as well.
Okay, so which of these tests is most important to us in teaching our children? The SBA, the I-Ready? Which one do we put the most weight into trying to bring them along? Does that make sense?
Yes, I. Yes, I mean, the iReady assessment is a district assessment, which just measures progress over the year. So we get to have data three times a year to see if our students make any progress in reading or math. The state, of course, uses this as measures, uses the smarter balance as measures for school success, which then they put us on plans of improvement, for example, and middle school is now on a plan of improvement for, because our test scores are not.
So they put you on a plan of improvement, and that's it? Do they give you any help? Do they make suggestions?
Yes.
Do they talk with Diana and say, we put middle school on a plan of improvement, great, so what does that mean?
It's up to us to develop the plans then that we.
Well, that's not very useful.
We receive, that we believe would help our students. And again, that's part of where I work with, with professional learning communities and really honing in on the learning targets and building our unit lesson plans around those learning targets. The one change that I would say, and the part that is missing are the twos, the twos that are really close to see how many of our kids are, score twos, but what you're going to see at the high school is it used to be that students had to pass the smarter balanced assessments to graduate. Now there are multiple ways that students can graduate. Scoring a certain level on the, on the ASVAB, I mean, all kinds of pathways to where it kind of takes the wind out of the sails. It's in the benefit of the students, but if the test truly identifies critical thinking skills and we want our kids to be able to read, write, speak, and do math, especially if they're going into some technical area where they have to have math, we want them to do that. We, I would think that that would be our primary goal as a board, to make sure our kids are getting that guaranteed and viable curriculum.
So we provide the curriculum, and the student decides whether or not they want to take it and learn it. Because there are so many, because there are, no, because there are so many different ways to graduate. I don't need trigonometry or calculus or whatever, because I'm not going to go to space or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, the instructional core has a teacher factor as far as the teacher readiness, the curriculum, and then the student buy-in. And so at the middle school, I just wanted to say that we just adopted Amplify as our ELA curriculum, and our teachers are very excited because it does have a writing component, and our students are writing every day now. And in our math, we are piloting math programs. We have been using AURICA Math, but we have noticed that it hasn't really been engaging our students. It's very cut and dry. And so we are, our math teachers are spending time in piloting different programs and hopefully recommending one to you all in the spring to adopt for next school year. So we're looking at those programs to help with our math scores.
Okay.
So what's the participation?
We've reached ninety-five percent at all of our schools.
You do?
Yeah.
Can you mention that? I thought that was kind of interesting on Insight one.
Yeah, that's really a barrier with kids doing school from home. And then to compound that with Insight School of Washington, some school districts will allow their students to test in their residential district, but some students don't want to test in their residential district because they've had negative experiences there. And so then they have to travel to a testing site, and Myron didn't mention this, but, and Sheila's there, but I think we've got like thirty-six testing sites. So for example, if a kid didn't want to take their test in QBSD in Forks, we have, I don't know, twenty-some students who are now in Insight School of Washington, I think twenty-six of Forks, then they have to go to the testing site in Squim. And so if their parents can't transport them, or they don't take off work, and they don't want to come test here because of a negative experience they've had, and they don't want to walk into the building, then their only other option is to do it in Squim. And so the, the transportation becomes a barrier.
Don't we pay for that, though?
We, we can.
I thought we talked about that before, you know, a couple of years ago.
Pay for getting somebody to the testing site.
Yeah.
Well, a parent can opt the student out of the test as well. I mean, you, you're just hitting all of the, what we don't want are the excuses. We want it to be another ordinary day where they have learned how to drive a parallel park, they learn how to stop, they understand a stop sign, a stop light, and they just come in and they do the test. That's what we want, because they, we know that what's on the smarter balanced test is going to prepare them for college and career readiness.
We just have them do it that way. Why all this crap going to Squim to take the test? Say, you've got to take it here.
Because they.
There's all these other factors, yeah. Brenda?
The kids, they just.
I won't ask you any questions.
You can ask me so many questions.
Ask you a question.
Yeah, so you can see that ours are pretty yucky too. When the staff came in and looked at them during our curriculum days, they were disappointed because they worked really hard to increase the rigor last year and make the most of this for our students. So the staff is working really, really hard. Like Diana pointed out, there are multiple pathways, and students know that they don't have to pass this test in order to graduate anymore. So I was in here doing an observation, and I perform observation at the beginning. And one of the students finished a math test in less than two minutes because he just went through it quick, 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 quick. Because he'd already passed the.
As well.
With like a sixty-seven, and all you have to do is get thirty-one on that in order to pass that. He's just like, this doesn't matter to me, it's not there. But it's really important today. I don't know if you all noticed that when you go in through the gym in twenty-ten, was last year Forks High School received school distinction. And that award was based off of our scores during the, during that time period, so we had high performing testers, testers, and our score showed it. I am an adamant believer that every single one of our students can pass this test, that our teachers are providing the opportunities for them to do that. We just need the students to believe in themselves and slow down and take it to prove it. They need to know how important this is and what it makes us look like and bring back that school, that school pride that is so, so prevalent and has been missing for a few years. So with my little shiny piece, I really believe that it's shifting. The leadership, his name's, oh my gosh, when I said our students to leadership camp, the guy that he brought in, Travis, came back and he said that this was the first time since COVID that kids were actually acting as kids and engaging and having fun and talking to each other during leadership camp. And I think that we were able to see a lot of that this last week during homecoming week. Our kids were engaging at a different level. So with my shiny little spin, I'm really truly hoping that I keep pushing, teachers keep pushing, they care, they slow down and take it. They only have to score a level two now in order to graduate. If they score that level three, they're college ready, they don't have to take any remedial classes this way. If there's cut score at like a twenty, I can't remember the numbers, it's like twenty-three, ten for ELA. Math is higher for that level two cut score than.
That's a state thing.
A state.
So they're lowering, they're lowering the bar in order so that nobody has to keep anybody back. Everybody gets a trophy.
Yeah.
Brenda loves that.
Yeah.
So do you, do you test them before they take it?
So that's the beauty of the situation.
That's going to be the downfall of our country.
Sure, as, as advocate of our, that if they take iReady, and they need grade level, then they don't need to do the winter diagnostic because they've already shown that they can do that. Well, we've actually started doing it at high school because iReady is a little bit hard to hate high school students.
Well, and it's, it's, the better you do, the harder it is. So it takes students who are, it takes a week of class time if they do well. And at high school, that's a long time, they tend to score lower on iReady than they do on SBA.
Just quit doing it.
Yeah, because they just, well, and it's just, it's hard, it's really hard. So in place of that, we'll give us real wide data that's attached to the SBA as we've started implementing the interims. And last year, as part of our PD, for natural school improvement plan, they all took the smart, they went through the smarter balance, and they did practice tests, and they started implementing interims in their classrooms. So now I think I'll have one staff member that needs to go with the SBA looks like, so I'm just going to give them a little bit of time to get back in there and see what it looks like. And then we're going to do a practice interim as part of our staff development so that they can see what that looks like and then figure out how to access the data to modify their instruction.
So SBA is covering English language, arts, and math and science.
Science at the eleventh grade.
So does that, does that incorporate all your teachers then?
No, but we can get that through advisory. We just have to be.
How do they do that?
Speak outside the box. I'm not, I haven't built that yet, but that's something that we're, we're talking about on how to, to get that built into the system. So the other thing, the sad part with science is they take it fifth, they take it eighth, and then we don't get any data until eleventh grade. There's no more time for that. But ELA and math, they take it three through eight, and they skip ninth grade, they take tenth grade. Tenth grade is when we get our, our report card on there. So the eleventh, if they don't pass it in tenth grade, they could take it again in low degree, they could take it again in twelfth grade, but that doesn't affect our scores, just that tenth grade year. So that piece.
But does it help the kids? Do they actually get it if they don't get it in tenth grade and they have to do it in eleventh? Are those kids getting it?
Most kids have it.
Have it by tenth grade.
It's just taking them, having them go slow, having them believe that it means something. And it's actually easier than having to sit down and take all these tests. If you sat down and did it the first time and made it happen, you would be done, and I wouldn't have to sign you up for SAT, I wouldn't have to sign you up for ASVAB. I wouldn't have to make up pathways so that way you could graduate because you already proved that you can read and write. Most kids can make it at tenth grade right then. Some kids, very few, just need that modification. It's just changing that mindset. I really believe all means all. We can get it all of our kids.
Pre-COVID SBA, the year before, the year before COVID, ELA at tenth grade was at seventy-two percent.
Wow.
Yeah, so we've, we've, there, there is reality. To coming back and building stamina and being able to just focus.
And where up with the bars at? It's really going to rise. So I used to do, like, the first week of school, I used to do this thing called as much as humanly possible, and I'd take half the kids, and I'd send them up to the library, and then I'd keep that half the kids in the class, and I would, I'd go through this process that I would say, okay, give me, I'd like you to make a list for me, right, as many words that you associate with the word ball, minimum ten, right? So then I would collect that data. Most kids would hit seven or eleven. They would give me a little bit. Then I'd switch the class, and I would bring in the second group, and I would say the same sentence, except instead of the minimum ten, as much as humanly possible. And they would have sixty seconds to write it all down. And I would see those numbers go from seven to eleven, all the way to twenty-three, twenty-seven, because they felt that sense of urgency. And that's what's missing, is our students are missing that sense of urgency. But I'll tell you, this, this test is easier than sitting down and taking all these other tests.
The SBA.
Yeah.
So how does, how do kids going to running start? Do they have to show proficiency, SBA?
The hope is.
Or whatever, before they can be released, or do we have no control over releasing them to?
We don't have any control.
So they can go whether they know how to read or not?
Yeah.
And the college doesn't care?
The, the college has three ways. If they could go, they can take the app place, or they can be placed off their SBA scores, or they can do a written test that shows that they can write. So a couple of them that have done.
An essay, yeah.
A couple of them that have done that have been kind of fallen through the cracks, honestly. And one of them is now over at the ELA program trying to get caught back up. The other one is now doing homeschool plus trying to get caught back up. So those are two kids that.
So, does the college turn them back to us if they can't meet their assessments?
But they kept the money.
And, and then I get to clean up with them.
Business for them. Is this frustrating for the teachers to see?
They were really disappointed, Kevin. It, it was hard to watch.
Because I know the teachers are trying their hardest.
No, they were, they were disappointed. It, it was actually one of them would just keep standing out of my mind because I know how hard that person worked. Yeah.
I mean, it must be frustrating, because you're trying to do everything you can, and then the scores keep coming back like this.
Yeah.
So many factors, so many.
That's not a reflection of what our kids can do. That's, that's the sad part.
I would think that they're smarter than that.
And, and you're telling us it's not a reflection of what our teachers are doing? That's good.
It might be that we aren't focusing on the right things. Like, one of the things that I've learned is just exposure to grade level. So if a fourth grade teacher says, I need to assess where they are, well, kids lose over the summer. That doesn't mean they've lost everything. And then they spend the first three or four weeks reviewing what they should have learned in the third grade. They've lost eight percent of the time of introducing them to grade level concepts. And so it might be that we have to shift some of our practices in the way we think. And that's what we are engaging our staff in their learning. The building principals and Kyle and I have now sat in, how many sessions of training already? Four-hour sessions?
Four, sixteen now.
And it sounds like it was torture.
No, but it is, it is going to help us focus so that teachers aren't exhausted when they look at the scores and going, I'm working my tail off. And I'm not maybe focusing on parallel parking, and it's a big part of the test, so I have to shift my thinking.
But they got to teach them how to shift first.
Three concepts that are coming out of this work that Diana is talking about is glow.
Is who? Glow?
Yeah, she's going to talk about it. And then the test blueprint, so exposing our staff to that. Because I think mathematically, when you look at the math standards, it's this big, but they're really only assessed on this much. So then the teachers need to narrow their focus to see what's really being assessed. Teach those hard, share the other stuff because they're going to need that, but focus on this is.
And who set up all that extraneous stuff?
The state.
Yeah.
And why?
The state. Yeah.
That doesn't make much sense.
No.
So they shotgun it, and then only count the bullets, only count the rounds that hit the target.
Yeah, and those test things are aligned with the SBA. I talked a lot. I'm really passionate about this, just saying.
I think we need to get rid of OSBI.
Well, you can do it that easily.
Well, a lot of them, they depend on the schools.
And you can put that in the notes.
Some of these kids, you know, they don't have anything at home. There's nobody to help them once they leave the school. You know, where some kids, you know, they've got family that helps them, you know, so that's a big part of it.
Okay, are there any other schools that want to come before us?
I think that's it.
Thank you all, and please don't take my comments as criticism. It was frustration, not with you. And not with your staff, in case any of them get wind of this. Like, watch the recording.
No, but she's got to be frustrated.
Well, I know I am. Okay, oh, where are we now? Thank you all. That was, and thank you, principals. Appreciate your efforts. Yeah, clues. Educational programs operations, oh gosh, another good one.
We're just on a roll here, aren't we?
We have to, yeah, levy items and stuff. Let's go.
Can you go to the next presentation? I know, nothing's.
Mine keeps going on.
Mine just is spinning.
Oh, mine working good.
It's trying, it's just not.
Why does?
Did you get anything over the weekend, Kyle?
Oh.
Got up early, though. What's that?
Hey, Nathan? Is Nathan there?
Wake up, Nathan.
I'm not sure why it's on the screen, but I can show it this way, but the audience can see it. Well, then the audience can't see it, but.
If you'd like to move up to the table, ours, you can.
The audience, audience.
Well, if it comes, it means they could sit at our table and look at it.
Okay, so, this is discussion again. The last time we talked about our replacement educational program and operations levy was when Corey was here from DA Davidson in the, in the summertime. So we're kind of ramping stuff up, so I want to go over some critical pieces of information because by November twenty-fifth, we'll need to file a board resolution that determines what our collection is for the EPNO levy. So just a simple reminder that levies are for learning, and we're doing a replacement EPNO levy. You can do that for one to four years. Bonds are for building. Our goal is to take the operations levy and put it on the February ballot of twenty-twenty-five, and perhaps the replacement for Forks Middle School bond on twenty-twenty-seven when our old bond expires. And again, so especially levies help pay for a lot of things that are not covered by the state, our educational program. the state, our educational programming, um, extracurricular activities. It really is beyond what the basic education component is. So go to the next one. And, um, QVSD, here are some big picture items. And that, um, is, it pays for any of our unfunded staffing. And I'll show you the dollar line of, um, what are, um, the, uh, the funding model doesn't cover. It covers our extracurricular activities, technology, curriculum, furniture, all kinds of, um, things that the state does not, the basic formula does not provide. Our EPNO needs a fifty-plus-one voter's approval, which is a simple majority. Without the approved levy, then we would not receive our local effort assistant, assistance funding, our LEA. Currently, we would, um, that would be a loss of about four million a year if we kept at the same collection levy. And then the other thing is we would lose, uh, some of our timber dollars, um, as well. If you don't have a bond and/or a debt, then you don't get your timber dollars. So.
What do, um, schools that don't pass their levies, what do they do? They're losing, I mean, four million dollars.
They cut people.
Some school districts get LEAs, local effort assistance, and some don't. We do because we're considered property poor, or our property values, like in Seattle, on the I-five corridor, they only have to do a little bit to raise a whole lot of money because they have a huge taxation foundation. But there are lots of school districts who haven't passed. I think Moses Lake was one.
Mary's.
Marysville, Yelm, uh, North Basin, a bunch who don't. And then there, some of them are going in binding conditions because you can only, um, put it on the ballot twice in a calendar year. That's why we're going out early in February. So we've got April in the event something would happen. Um, but lots of people are having double levy failures. And so they're having to figure out how to do without staff. And that would be the reality. We would, we literally get paid for only twelve classified staff members. We would have to riff sixty, I mean, three-point-seven million dollars worth of funding for, for staff that were not paid for. So I put in here, um, kind of the pie chart. If we looked at that four million that we get with our local, we get about seven hundred some thousand. And currently, we're seeing that LEA dip. And I'll show you why here in a minute. But about fifty-eight percent of it is unfunded staffing and other mandates that we aren't necessarily paid for. About thirteen percent of that four million is, uh, extracurricular activities. That's all of our athletic programs, our, um, transportation, referees, everything that goes into that extracurricular. Um, non-basic education programmatic funding, music, drama, field trips at three percent, about eight percent of maintenance repairs and equipment, about two percent for transportation. Transportation mostly pays for itself, but that would be like equipment. Um, and then curriculum textbooks at about five percent, technology, about ten percent of that four million, and then food services, about one percent. Um, and so I pulled this off the classified contract analysis where we had that consultant come in and, and look. So, uh, our EPNO levy covers that deficit cost of three-point-three million. So if we didn't pass our, um, LEA, we'd have to do it twice. We'd have reserves to pay for staff till we could, till we could fund it.
Make a plan.
Yeah. So go to the next one. Again, so then the other thing that we get in, with, when we pass an EPNO levy is we get what's known as our local effort assistant. That's kind of an, um, equalization. They're trying to make up for what we don't get because we're not Bellevue, and we're not Seattle, we're not the I-five corridor, even Kitsap County. A lot of those schools don't get LEA. And, um, they put a cap on that of what you have to pass for a tax rate to maximize that. So I'm gonna show you here. Go ahead and go to the next one. So in order to get full eligible local effort assistance, we have to have a minimum rate of a dollar fifty per thousand worth of AV assessed value. We are currently at, not eighty-two, but eighty-one percent. So we're missing out on fifty-four percent of our LEA funding. I'm gonna show you what that looks like here. So actually, if you go back twenty years since I've been here, just stay right there. I did the last, uh, four years. So that's what we levies, about seven hundred and one, up to seven hundred and fourteen. That's what we've collected. We're levying, when you did, when we did the last, when you voted on the last resolution, we said we would collect seven hundred and fourteen, um, three hundred and three dollars. What we actually collected, you can see in 2021, 2022, that we're delaying what taxes for whatever reason. But that's about the percentage of our overall budget. But the levy equalization is what we get when we pass that. But you can see, back in 2021, we were about a dollar fifty per thousand. But when your assessed value goes up, then that dollar fifty per thousand goes down. So when we're currently at eighty-one, um, per thousand, we're only collecting two million nine hundred and nine instead of the four-point-three million.
And there's no way, there's no way to index that? You're, you're locked in? That, that is a downside.
That's the downside to doing a four-year. And that's why some people do a one-year, and then they reassess, and then they do another one. But then that confuses people. We try to keep it, we've tried to keep it really simple where we're not gonna increase taxes. Because every time you put something on the ballot, everybody thinks, oh, my gosh, they're trying to increase taxes again. But you can see, back in 2019, that's when they put the, what they call the levy lid and the LEA restrictions in. So in 2020, I think we went out for the levy. We, it started in 2021. We were so messed up with COVID. We didn't even pay attention to, and we didn't know our property values were gonna go skyrocketing. But you can see the effect of what has happened over the years because of our assessed value going up. We don't collect more than seven hundred and four, whatever, fourteen.
Equalization.
It's just, it, it fluctuates based on, um, so we're not messing with the eighty-one per thousand or the dollar fifty per thousand. Whatever you put on the ballot, you say, we're gonna collect one-point-one million, whatever that is, or seven, or eight hundred thousand. That's what you're gonna collect for four years. So that dollar per thousand could go up or down on your AV.
Right. But the, the amount that the tax, district taxpayers have is the same.
Yeah. So go to the next one. So currently, it's actually eighty cents per one, one thousand. So if you have a, it used to be we always did a home with value of a hundred thousand. I don't even know if you can find one. So if you have a home at four hundred thousand for the levy, not the bond, you're paying three hundred and twenty a year. So you could go into your assessment after you're gonna hopefully, or maybe pay your first of this, or October payment, you could see what that is. It's listed toward the bottom. So go to the next one. So if we were gonna raise that to a hundred, to get the maximize of our LEA, we would need to increase that by seventy cents. Um, so go to the next page. So a dollar fifty for valuation would go from four hu, for a home of four hundred thousand, it would go from three twenty to six hundred. It would ra, be raised by two hundred and eighty dollars a year to get that dollar fifty. So this is even a better, uh, and again, it doesn't start until 2026. So you can, but the other thing is we currently have a bond out. So we're paying a dollar twenty. You can see it right where we are for this year. For this year, the total cost, uh, two dollars and one cent. So for a three hundred thousand dollar home, you look at the two, we're paying about six hundred. For a four hundred thousand, about eight hundred. For a half million, a thousand five. And then look at the bottom there. And you're gonna see the bond is gonna start decreasing because we're paying it off. So it goes from a dollar twenty to one sixteen. So that top number's gonna go down. But if we went to a dollar fifty, assuming that there was one percent growth in AV, that's what we would pay for a dollar fifty, four hundred and fifty on a three hundred thousand dollar home, six hundred, seven fifty. But the total is the bond and the EPNO levy. So that kind of gives you, go back. Yeah. So that kind of gives you an idea of what it would look like.
But how do you, how do you sell that to the public? Because you can't get everybody together and run a slideshow like this. And they don't read the newspaper, a lot of them. So.
Correct.
They're just gonna go, you're raising my taxes. I'm gonna pay more.
So number one, it's really important that all of you understand. Because if you're not behind it, imagine me trying to get, us trying to get the public behind it. So the, the second thing, point, and again, this is introductory, I think we need probably a work session where we spend about an hour really going through everything so you truly understand before we make a decision. Because you're gonna walk away and go, oh, I kind of got what she said. Now I need to see it again. Um, but the second thing is we, under our agenda today for the consent, we've hired a professional communications expert who's gonna help us analyze our social media in Forks, analyze ways that we can, because the other thing is our voter population has changed. And number two, the way we communicate has changed drastically since the last four years. And so they're, they have, uh, tools and ways to really assess the Forks community. Part of it is me getting out, taking one of you with me and going to entities to say, here's what it is, here's why it is, putting it in the paper for, um, the veteran generation of Forks, putting it on social media in different ways, and then making sure that our staff really understands it. Because our staff, too, are very critical in communicating the positives. I mean, it's gonna take an all-out, um, my work and your help in that for the next, uh, starting in late November. The ballots come out in mid-January or a February, mid-February.
Is there anything else we have to contend with? The hospital, or has anybody else got a levy?
I do not believe so. No.
They did theirs last year.
Yeah. But you're seeing all over this what they call levy lid, trying to get up, there, everybody's trying to maximize because the, the state has put in with that LEA stuff, a lot of things like that across the board, um, to increase that. That is based on one percent growth. And so, uh, that amount, that dollar fifty. So now I'm gonna tell you the bad news. If you look at, there's a sheet in front of you that looks like this. You can go to that next paper. They're not really able to see that. You have a sheet that looks like this here. Kyle, pass this out to your audience, to our audience there. And I think this is kind of what Bill was talking about. But I based that dollar fifty on one-point-three million if we were gonna get to from eighty-one cents, eighty cents. I think it's really at eighty cents to get to the dollar fifty. That's based on a one percent growth of AV. Look at what the growth has been from February of 2017, or, or twenty, February of 2020. We had a seven-point-five percent growth rate. Then in 2021, we had a nine-point-nine. In 2022, an eight-point-four. 2023, eighteen, eleven. 2024, twelve-point-eight-three. So we don't know what our AV is. So if we're shooting to try to maximize our LEA, I'm not sure that that's really what we wanna do. Because how do you project that? And so let's say that we're gonna project it at a seven-point-five percent growth. That dollar fifty per thousand is not going to be two eighty for a four hundred thousand dollar home. It's gonna be much higher. And I can give you the rates of what each of that would look like. But, but that's gonna be a lot more if we're collecting one-point-five million, depending on where that comes in. Do, does that make sense?
No, not, not, sort of. I'm not seeing it on this.
Well, the, the dollar figure isn't there. We'd have to do the math.
Right. So, we're at the mercy of the county, though, in our AV growth rate, right?
Correct.
And so can you, you know why it went twenty-eight percent in 2023?
You reassessed all the property.
Well, I know, but.
Well, and then the other.
Don't they do that?
The other factor that's not in here, remember that we also have growth with timber assessed value. So the timber assessed value would offset what we might pay locally. But the problem with that is it's all dependent on what is actually cut. And.
So it doesn't matter what's standing?
Uh-uh. Yeah.
But it, does that factor into, that doesn't, what standing timber doesn't, does that factor into the assessed valuation of that property? Ron, do you know?
It, it does, but it's only real when it's cut. So if you are a private timber company and it's in that, in that debt service area, then i- if they collect, I don't know, let's say out of the seven hundred thousand, uh, if we, if we collected two hundred thousand, then that's, then that's, we only collect five hundred thousand.
From our taxpayers?
Yeah.
I gotcha, okay.
From the assessed value of homes.
And that's only collected after it's harvested?
And our tax experts always say, we wanna minimize that and pretend it's not there because that's always a bonus. And then you will always come in under the dollar fifty or eighty cents, whatever you say is.
So don't count on that?
Don't count on it.
Yeah.
There's too much at, at stake there.
And too much variability.
Uh-huh. Not knowing when those sales are gonna come.
So we're talking that maybe we need to raise the.
It don't depend how much.
Yeah, it, it, so we, we gotta, need to pick a, oh, yeah, that's gonna take some.
So I, I put together some pretend numbers, not pretend. Kyle's gonna hand that out, too.
So basically, if you wanna collect all theirs to collect that where the one fifty comes in.
Right. If we don't wanna go as high as one fifty.
Yeah, if we don't wanna go.
So we'll take, we'll take less.
We'll take less. And that's what we did this last one, is that over the year.
We took, yeah, it kept going down, so.
It was assessed high, right? And it's the eighty-one, you know?
Yeah, right.
So if we looked at maximizing, like, you, you, we went for one-point-three million, and then you looked at, your projected revenues are gonna be around six-point-two million if you maximized at the one percent growth. So I put in a mock of what, not mock, but actual of what we need, with the exception of where, where it says EFS roof, that should be in yellow there, um, because I put the two million in there. We're ready to go, but we think we can get a grant. So if you take the, the two million out of there, we're really spending about four-point-five million with the unfunded personnel costs, curriculum, furniture, field trips, unforeseen repairs, uh, the one-point-three million are fixed costs for tech, extracurricular, Chromebooks, upgrade gym audio. You can see Kyle and Jan and Bill and I really brainstormed of everything we would need over a four-year levy process. And you can see where the numbers come in. I mean, the, the good news is if we decided to lower that number, we do have reserve funding. And then the other thing that just really you don't know is legislation can make changes in any given year. You're looking at a lot of schools that are in binding conditions. They may say, we need to do something to bail out. We need to change a prototypical funding model. We need to fund schools more. And, and we could see a million different things that we don't know what those are gonna be. So the, and I think the real question is what do you think our community would get behind and why? And I know our community, at least the old voters that I know, would say, don't make us pay more than what you don't need. What do you really need?
Right. That's why we need a work session, to dive into that.
And then the message, we're gonna have to come up with the messaging, our communication specialists who are out of Vancouver, they're gonna help us get the information out there and help publish all the pretty stuff. Um, but we're gonna need to turn that around pretty soon. So I was thinking a workshop, but, jet it, jet it up next to our next board meeting, um, where we do an hour work session and really get into.
That's enough.
An hour and a half, maybe. We can do a shorter board meeting and, and, and do that. But I would ask you, what do you, what else do you need from me?
Well, so, if you go back there, trying to max out like we used to, we know for certain the valuation is not gonna go down. Anything, it's gonna go up more.
Right.
I think, I mean, it's.
The county won't, I mean, you can go and invite them to reassess your value.
But that's, that's a blanket thing.
Right. So, you know, once they get their money, they're gonna keep it as much as they can, right? So they, I mean, to value these homes, I don't think it's gonna go down a lot. So, but to, what we need to know is, do we need to max it out? We didn't last time, and we came out okay. We didn't last time and we came out okay, right? I mean, we went from, what is it, 2020, we didn't get 280,000 and then by the end of '24, we didn't get 2.2 million, right? That came in and we still got a reserve room. So I guess my question is, what do we need?
So what, I guess I'm along with you, we need to prioritize, you know, what's highest, for a work session, I think we need to work on prioritized. Do we prioritize it?
That's what we did last time.
Yeah, I would, and you know, have Bill and the building principals there and everybody, it's a workshop for all because, you know, we would need to prioritize because.
And, and again, the biggest chunk of the, if you will, if we were going to go 6.2 million and you can see that 2.7 million plus the 700, that really only gets us at about 3.4 million.
Now wait a minute, you're confusing me there.
Sorry. If you go back, go back to local effort assistant funding, we're collecting about 4 million right now.
Okay.
Between our local taxes and what we're getting with our LEA. It looks funny because our LEA doesn't match our fiscal, our fiscal year doesn't match the voting year.
Right.
But if you look at our personnel costs and unfunded costs, in 2025, 2026, we'll be at 3.7 million. So that's going to eat up about 4 million. We're not going to have enough for the rest, we'll have to dip into reserves. If that's what you choose to do to keep the tax rate down, I don't see that those costs are going to go down any. And then we aren't going to, going to be able to repair as much, we've done a lot of really good work if we don't go after that extra funding. But it might be that we do a happy medium or I, I, it would be good for you to go through prioritizing what you think we need. The other factor that is there, which again, we're going to see here in the end of the month this year, is that we are not gaining enrollment, we are losing local enrollment. And that is a trend across the nation, that, that public schools are losing.
We're well under 900, right.
You know, we are about at eight, I think our 868 was our, I don't know what the new count is for October. And so then when you're looking at overall personnel and other factors, that you still have to do all the same things.
Oh, with regard to the facilities and all, sure.
But we could certainly, I could, we've got a little protocol that we used last time when we prioritized what, so I could see where your priorities are as a board. I think we should probably do that with the building principals and Bill and Jan and Kyle.
So this is just for the levy, like a bond will be for the great.
Bond is building, levy is learning.
So when are we going to do a bond for that?
That would be in 2027 to currently, currently replace the one that we have, which is about a dollar 20 per thousand. It will be interesting to see if we can get a dollar 20 per thousand. We'll probably have to do a 30-year bond with our school construction assistance program to see. But again, if we're shrinking in numbers, we may need to look at a different configuration of our students in our buildings. If we have X amount of square footage in a high, that's a whole nother conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll start working on that after we get through this.
Yep. And maybe the state will figure out a different way to fund. Make you do it all.
So we, the consensus is we'll do a workshop?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there, I, I would just say then, between now and October, it's probably going to be the 26th if you vote on the next, on a Tuesday night session instead of Monday night. If there are things that you want me to bring you that I've not introduced, I'm going to show it to you in another way and do the same thing so you really understand it. Because you've got to see it like two or three, four times.
That helped tonight.
Yeah.
That's good.
But remember, you guys live this more than the average person in Forks. And then again, I believe our voting pattern has changed dramatically since, because of the loss of homes to outsiders. That can be a good thing or a bad thing for Airbnb's, yeah. So we're, the other thing that I would ask you to think about is we will put together a committee that will support our work because we can't go out and demand that people vote yes, but a committee of helpers can, who are outside of the district. I know the union is planning on doing something, I would assume that ASB students do something as well, they've done something in the past. We can't make them, but if they want to step up, they can help us. But I would be, have you start thinking about people that would be good on that committee? We usually do about 10 to 12 people, have a veteran, of the old guard maybe, and some parents who have stake in their kids' schools right now, of the younger ones, to really help us get the word out.
Go wrong.
Okay, that's all I have, that's a lot.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, it's good.
Page two. PLC training for the board.
Hey, like this is where I, we need your help. So Thursday, October the 24th, you have three two-hour trainings this year, one in, Kevin actually showed up for our training the other day.
I know.
Anyway, it's awesome. Yay, Kevin.
He's a player.
Um.
They said I could say.
So Thursday, October the 24th is for board members, they're going to give you a two-hour training so you understand what it is we're trying to do and it really does tie you into test scores.
So this one we go to, right?
This one you go to, we'll do it in Kyle's office, except I won't be there, Kyle won't be there because we will be in Washington DC, I'll join you guys virtually.
Will any of us be in Washington DC with you at that time?
No.
It's not the ILW?
It is.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
None of us are going?
No. And then Hazel and Kirsten McCracken will take care of your needs during that, Kirsten will do, because we, we join five other school districts, so you'll be with five other boards, two from Washington State, one from Colorado, one from New York, and then us, we're all in this national cohort.
All school students?
No, we opted in to find a solution so that we can have better results, so we can go. Feeling frustrated, that's what we want. We'll have food there for you. Um, I get so excited. And then the next date is January the 7th and then March the 4th again.
Why don't we just, why do we do them so far apart? Why don't we just do them?
Because that's the way they, I don't know.
It's going out a little bit at a time.
Yeah, probably because to catch you up, to catch where we're at, we're at, we've already learned a ton of stuff.
So how important, I mean, I don't mind going, I, I want to go, but how important is it that we know this stuff? Because after a two-hour session, three months later, how much am I going to remember?
All means all. This is a different mind shift of what it takes to get all kids over the bar.
Right.
And it takes everyone, including the school board, so when you're asking the bar questions, yeah.
I just wondered, sometimes I like, you know, when you spread them out, I've forgotten what the first one was, going to the second one, which is pretty much later.
So do we go to the one on the 7th or the night?
Yes, those are the, yeah, and we'll give you plenty notice.
Are we bringing our little devices or is there?
No, we'll have a big one, we'll have a big one, ready to go.
That's good. Okay. So mark October 24th on your calendars, two to four, hopefully you all can make it. Is there a makeup time?
No. So Sheila, hey Sheila, on the.
Yes?
On the 24th of October, I think, Washington DC, that'll be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM and that will be right during our.
Reception.
Our fun, our reception. Will I be able to get a room where I can join them for a little bit?
Of course, we will make sure that happens.
Okay, one of those fun rooms, you know, with the big tech.
You could sit on the teeter totter and have your laptop go up and down, it'll be lovely.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Hazel will, will remind you again when this gets closer.
Thank you.
Excellent. Let's move on to board member reports. Does anybody have one?
I had a guy approach me about, down in the Elma School District, I guess, warehouseers working with them to, with students, doing something with forestry down there, a forestry program, taking the kids out, teaching them stuff.
They do one in Clama that's really good, they have, they're all up behind their high school, they have the timberlands up there and they go and teach up there.
They were wondering if we could implement something here and.
Well, it's been talked about, what timber company?
Yeah, who's still here?
So they, they actually, RSG, which is a sawmill company down Clama area, they have a program through the school, they get kids involved in it and they actually get credits to take them out. They have their own timberland behind their high school, they own it.
The school does or?
Yeah, the school does, so they go out on that and do a lot of that. So, and I didn't know, I haven't heard about the Elma one, that's probably something new.
Don't care about Elma, John was.
Yeah, it's probably, probably something new.
I mean, with M and R and.
M and R takes.
Tree farm, maybe?
They take grade school kids out every year to plant trees and show them the forest or show them what they do.
But this would be more, I get, this would be more, like, what do foresters do, you know, measure trees, drill.
Yeah, I don't know.
Fore trees.
We have one RC up there that does a lot of, through the University of Washington, but it's never, I don't, it's something that kids want to get into it. And then the Peninsula does a forestry school now.
Yeah, they just started that. Natural Resource Program, they just started.
Yeah, and I think Peninsula is trying to go four-year, I think Grace Harbor has a four-year forestry program, Peninsula is a two-year, but I think they're trying to get it to go to four. And that's the thing, if we can get, the problem with, and we've had this discussion at the DNR and stuff, but, so you get people here to work that come from college, from Evergreen or wherever college they do now and come up here, and usually there's a lot of openings here so they get jobs, and then when they get experience, they'll transfer back. So if we got kids that are from Forks or Fort Angeles that like forestry, if they, if those kids get into the programs, they're here, right? So they're going to stay here with family and work here.
Yeah.
But a lot of them just come into DNR and as soon as they get in someplace else close to their home, they transfer out there. So.
Kind of like creatures.
Yeah, I mean, it's same, same thing. So, but there is a lot of, they always have openings, they can't fill them.
I'd be curious in Elma if that's a Grace Harbor slash partnership with the school district, the dual credit program, which was probably what it is. The dual credit programs that we have ended up being running start, and with Peninsula College already having a forestry program, then it's harder for us to get, one, a certified staff member who could teach and then enough kids to do it. I'm not saying it's impossible, but we could certainly call Elma and find out how they're doing it.
Good idea.
They do work on, what, let's see, they have.
Do you happen to know the Elma High School principal?
No, not yet. I can reach out.
Okay.
I don't know what they're talking about.
So Elma does another CTO program that's Boeing, I believe, that they do there for, for that. I was, because at WASTA, they had an actual work session, one year on it.
Well, you know, in the boat building place in Fort Angeles is building some usual.
That's repaired.
Repair, well.
Yeah, platypus.
Platypus, yeah, but you know, that might, I would imagine Fort Angeles has tapped into that, I would.
Can I interview you?
What?
Can I interview you?
Yeah.
Part of this, that limitless grant that we're getting is helping build community partnerships with this. So, and it's talking about partnerships where we get students out to like the, you guys just brought up the shipyard, like, things like that. So we're, we're working on this, but I'm still in the first year of learning in order to get that. And then I, I've asked Cheryl and Ms. Sparrow, who's our counselor, to start helping support RCT's staff, so that way we can get dual credit for welding and culinary, and for auto. So it's in the process, it's just, it takes, it takes a little bit of time to make it happen. So I.
You're working on it.
There, but not yet.
Yeah, I saw those were proposed courses for, for dual credit application.
Very catchy, all right. Well, thanks, Mike. Ron?
Yeah.
No, Shannon?
I'm good.
Okay. I don't have anything either, so let's move right on to Inside School of Washington report we had.
Sheila, sir.
Sheila, do you want to add anything to?
I'll just, I know Myron jumped off early and thank you for adjusting your schedule to let him go a little bit early. I'll just give a quick enrollment update, we, you know, we flex a little bit every day, but we're about 2980 in terms of student enrollment right now, which is a little over 370 students more than we had this time last year. So we're continuing to see nice growth there. I know it, it's kind of contrary to what a lot of the schools are seeing with enrollment declines, but may, maybe we have a little insight into where they're going, right? So that's good news and I'm definitely looking forward to seeing you Diana next week and Kyle. Since we, we spoke a couple of minutes ago about getting a room, I just think you and I might want to connect because 5 o'clock is before the reception, so there's buses that go at 5:30 and 5:45 over there, so maybe an option might be either go over early and get a room or maybe take an Uber after if you don't catch a bus.
Okay, sound plan. Thank you, Sheila.
You can figure it out, yep, looking forward to seeing you.
Looking forward to seeing you too.
Thanks.
Let's go on to old business.
Next year, next year.
Old business, second reading of Board Policy 5012, parent, family or marital status and pregnancy-related conditions of staff.
So last board meeting, I had you make a motion to approve this and I realized it was the first reading. It took several policies, I should say that our legal team at WASTA did, and merged them and changed them to updated language, so it's really a new board policy and you have to have two readings to approve it. So last session, it was approved erroneously, so now you've had a second reading. And you need to make it legal and approve it.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve policy number 5012.
I'll second. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It's approved. Number two, Board of Directors meeting calendar, starting October 29th, we need to decide whether we're going to, again, why are we moving them to Tuesday?
Monday night probably.
So I do basketball, both are go basketball, so the games are on Monday.
So are we going to keep this then forever until there's a conflict or are we doing a?
Kevin wants to go back and watch soccer, I guess.
Or are we doing, are we going to?
All the soccer is on Tuesdays, I mean, Mondays.
Is this temporary then or permanent? I mean.
I was wanting to go permanently back, so.
Back to Tuesday?
Yeah.
I don't care. Does anybody care?
Nope.
I didn't care, I didn't care, the way it was beginning with, but Kevin, we wanted to keep it that.
So you sure you don't want to do it Friday nights?
Yeah.
No.
Definitely not Friday.
Well, you know, what we've done is we've gone, 30 years ago, we met on Tuesdays and we're back. That's cool.
Well, you did that, I mean.
And we changed, we changed, yeah, for, for different reasons, so it's legit.
I just need to make sure I get it out in the public.
Sure, so Tuesdays, all right, we need a motion then.
OPMA, yeah.
Ron, you going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Change the board meetings to Tuesday.
I'll second it.
Same time?
Yeah, all right.
Okay. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, you did, okay, thank you.
So that's going to start then on October the 29th.
Next week. Or next week. Wait a minute. So that's the week after.
Yes.
It does, I think it'll be.
Okay, I'm willing. All right, all those in favor then of the motion to move our meetings to Tuesdays of each month, second Tuesday, no way, second and fourth Tuesday or?
Second and fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, okay. The second and fourth Tuesday of each month, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Then they're opposed. So we'll see. So we'll see in two weeks on Tuesday. Hope that works for you all, because we enjoyed seeing you here.
It says regular board meeting, second Tuesday of each month beginning. I should've said second.
Second and fourth, yeah.
Don't matter.
I said that. Okay. Number three, Approval of Our 24-25 School Year Calendar with Graduation.
So two things change then. This would indicate the board meeting change from the second and fourth Monday to the second and fourth Tuesday. Plus additionally, we learned after we have approved our original calendar that Peninsula College was not finalizing doing their graduation until the 21st. Is that correct? Brenda has met with the college to determine that we can have an early cutoff date for grades to indicate which kids would meet graduation requirements. And so we are moving graduation from the 7th until the 14th. And Sheila, is that the same day Insight School of Washington is, the 14th?
I think... You want, Diana, I have to look. I don't have it on the top of my head.
I can pull it up, and even if that is, we'll figure out how I can either be virtually there, go there, and leave immediately, and be back in town at Forks by 6:00. Yeah.
So all... So the senior's last day is the 6th, but they're not gonna graduate till the 14th? Is that true?
Yep.
As opposed to the old way we used to do it? They graduate a week early, and then they're done with school? Will we get them back for graduation?
They'll come back.
Okay. That's kind of bizarre, but okay. And the college is working with us on the grade thing?
Yes, they've identified that their official grade check for the college will be on June 6th.
But that applies only to the Running Star students, right?
The Running Star or the high school right now, I'm composing on a 3:30. Make sure so that way we have enough time to communicate to the students. So the even on track to, for graduation, to walk, that's where the cutoff date for them.
Okay.
So if they're not on track on June 6th, then they won't have the opportunity to walk. They can still graduate, but they won't be able to walk.
Okay. Well, it'll be interesting to see how that works, coming back a week later.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the final revised 2024-25 calendar. I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the school year calendar with graduation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None... Any opposed? No.
Can we get a copy of both of those calendars, maybe, at the next meeting?
Can you hear that?
All right. Now we're gonna move on to a revision of Board Policy 5403, Family Emergency Leaves. Is there a motion to revise that policy?
I'll make a motion to revise Board Policy 5403.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion or questions about it?
This is just...
Yes. According to the Washington, anything that's changed in at the... During the Wax Washington Administrative Code.
So in the red there, it says the circumstances must present a grace and clear danger. Is that supposed to be a V?
Uh, yep.
A grave and clear danger.
Clear danger, yeah, under the domestic violence.
Sounds like the name of a book.
Grace, yeah.
Clear and present danger.
Surprise, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? Just updates everything and makes it legal?
Yep.
Who helps you with those?
WASTA.
Okay. Good. All right. All those in favor... Did we have a motion? Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Well then, all those in favor of Board Policy 5403, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Don't hear any, so it is approved. Policy 5404, Family Leaves.
I'll make a motion to reject any revisions to Board Policy 5404.
Okay. I don't think I got any revisions. This is a new one?
Yeah. The one that is in there is the State Paid Family and Medical Leave. And the state implemented that several years ago, and this really should've been updated then. The Paid Family and Medical Leave Act is really... Was really intended for small businesses in Washington State, but now it's an added layer of opportunity for staff who can tap into medical leave once they've received or served a certain amount of hours. I think it's 812 hours. But it does not protect an employee's job like FMLA. It only provides, let's say somebody's out of sick leave, and they have medical care that they have to tend to for six weeks, they can tap into it. We have nothing... We don't approve this. The state approves it, and then staff get 2/3 of their salary.
Oh, the state thing?
But it was not intended for state agencies. It was intended for logging companies, for locomotion, for smaller or businesses to provide some kind of support for people who needed medical leave.
Okay, so all the school is involved in this is information on where to go to...
Where to get it, what our timelines are. It does state that at the end, if somebody goes out on paid family medical leave, we're not obligated to protect their job like if they went on FMLA, because we have to provide for kids and continue to provide services for our customers.
Okay. All right.
I only have a motion. I don't want to second it.
Is there a second to that motion? Did somebody second it?
I'll second it.
Thanks. Okay. All those in favor of Board Policy 5404, Family Leaves, say aye.
Aye.
Any no? Anybody opposed? Okay. It is approved. Policy 5409, Discretionary Leaves. This is a revision. Is there a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion. We approve.
Who seconded it? Kevin? Thank you. Any questions about this? It's to cover what...
Unpaid holidays for reasons that pay.
That new?
Yes. I mean, it's a change in discretionary leaves, but it really does hone in on...
Religious...
Yeah.
Okay. All those... Is there a... You've got a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It is approved. Next up, Board Policy... Oh, we're gonna talk about Student Discipline 3241P.
Just wanted you to be aware that we are changing our procedure for student discipline. OSPI put in emergency rules that changed the 20... The Washington Administrative Code of 2020. And the biggest changes are language around discretionary discipline. And part of it is that when we transitioned to the new discipline laws, the intention was to keep kids in the classroom as much as possible. The unintended consequences of that is that it hamstrung a lot of school districts to really provide what I would consider appropriate removal of a student when they were disrupting the educational environment for other students. So that's one portion of it. Instead of calling it emergency expulsion, they changed the language to emergency removal, which gives us more flexibility if a student is creating a serious educational disruption where we don't have to emergency spell them, we emergency remove them until we can figure out what we need to do to remediate or to help with the learning cycle of why they cannot behave that way.
And it says the district will not discipline a student in a manner that would prevent a student from completing subject grade level or graduation requirements. I mean, doesn't it all depend on what he did, or she or she did?
Well...
If it was really egregious, I mean, you'd have to...
Right, but we can't take away there. Even if a student is removed from the educational setting, we have to provide educational services as long as they're in our jurisdiction.
So if it was real egregious, they went to juvenile hall, he would be taught there?
Right, but let's say that the student can no longer... I'll give you an example. Maybe there's a HIB, harassment, intimidation, bullying, or there's a serious infraction between two students. The courts say that there's a restraining order. That student may not be within X amount of feet of the other student, so the alleged victim stays in the school. That student cannot come to our school, but we still have to provide educational services to that student. And so that's what it means by you can't withhold students' grades or promotion or graduation. So our services are a continuum of services where they might go into the homeschool plus or homeschool setting, a program like Inside School of Washington, some kind of alternate alternative setting. That would be what Phil was talking about, yeah.
Down here where it says school meals, graduation requirements, and recess should not be withheld. So has recess and meals been withheld from somebody?
Recesses have.
Back in the day.
Back in the day, when my kid was young, yeah, but it's...
Recession, not meals. They didn't deny them a meal, did they? They always got to eat.
It might have been that they were in lunchroom detention, and they didn't get a choice of what meal. They got a sack lunch or a peanut butter jelly sandwich. We can no longer do that. When we have a full meal setting, students get to choose their meal. And I would just say for like recess, if there's a problem on recess and a kid might need removal from recess, we would still do that. It's... You can't continue to take that away from kids who are misbehaving, obviously. They need research. Recession.
Okay. And is that all for this?
Yeah.
For the student discipline?
Yeah.
All right, then let's talk about Policy or Procedure 2161P, Special Education and Related Services for Eligible...
And again, this is... You don't need to do the procedure. I'm really bringing this to your attention so that you understand the work that we're doing, but if you ever wanna know what a special education teacher and/or staff member does, just read through this 38-page document. But the main change, so you know, is that if we send a student... Let me see, what was it? How do you remember what we put in there? Oh, I know. If building principals are responsible for notifying the Special Department of Disciplinary Removals that may exceed 10 days, there's just some small parts of the due process hearing. And then if we were to send... It's not in red, but it's in here somewhere. If we were to send a student to an outside agency, we have to vet the agency, is that right, for services? Yeah. Just so you know.